Mr. White and members of the board, we're doing things a little bit differently this evening. And the reason we're doing that is because we have so many things that are going on in our school system all the time. And there are so many amazing and wonderful things that are going on that I wanted to take a few minutes tonight and just recognize some groups at the beginning before we really even begin the meeting. So if I could please have all of our middle school track members stand up and come and stand right over here. Middle school first.
Is it okay if I do? Yeah, okay.
And could I have our middle school coaches? I know that I saw you here somewhere.
I'm gonna get their backs.
Come on. The Cook Twins. Well, not really twins. This is our middle school track team. They've had a very active and successful season. Our girls finished third in the conference. Our boys are the conference champions. But this past Saturday, they were invited to participate in a state meet. It's the first time that I remember a state meet that we were able to participate in as a middle school. If I'm wrong, don't tell me, okay? Just let me be wrong, okay? There were thirty, I believe thirty-three different teams there, including some of those who we worry about sometimes that come from charter schools. We won't say anything about recruiting, okay? And also, some teams that came from 4A schools. We're a 1A school. And our, our track team finished fourth out of thirty-three, and they finished fourth by one point. I'm proud of you. So Ms. McClung or Ms. Lucas, is there anything that you want to add?
Um, we did the math, and these girls and boys team between the two teams this season, they didn't only finish the year strong, but throughout the season, they actually conquered twelve school records.
Wow.
Over the season.
Wow.
That is, to my knowledge, is a record in itself.
So I want you to stay there for a minute and, and just be as beautiful as you all are because we're gonna get some others up here, okay? Could I have Chloe Chapman, Zoe Jenkins, and Abel Way come to the front? These three individuals are part of our History Day team that comes out of the middle school. Our History Day team has competed at multiple levels. First, they had to qualify locally, then they went to regionals, and then they, those that passed through regionals went to state, and that was about a week ago or so. And we, these three have qualified to compete at the national level in July. We are so proud of you. Now, Megan, I understand that you're involved in this as well.
Uh, yeah, the, the teams, yeah.
And can you give us a thirty-second elevator speech about History Day?
Uh, so History Day, they have to learn complex research, high-level critical thinking skills, and they have to be able to write a process paper, write an annotated bibliography, which most sixth graders have never done, ever. And then they have to be able to turn it into a product. These three did a performance on the first frontier, first spelled frontier, the Lost Colony, where they actually won the Audger Curratt Award, which is excellent in telling North Carolina coastal or maritime history. And, uh, yeah.
Thirty seconds, you did well. Congratulations to you all. And we would like for you to stand up here for just a minute because I want another group to come up and join you, okay? And that would be our high school men and women's track team. Find room. Come on.
Okay, we might have to back down.
I think we have representatives of this one.
Yes.
And the reason that we have representatives is because I called Ian the other day and I said, could you get some to come? And if there's, if it's difficult getting kids here, it's high school kids because they're so busy doing other things, you know? We don't even wanna talk about all the things they're involved in after school. I wanna brag on our high school boys and girls track team. They are both conference champions this year. Our girls are repeating for how many times? The third time in a row for conference champions. And back-to-back. The boys are back-to-back. That is phenomenal. We are proud of you. And I don't know if any of you have looked at Facebook today, but Mr. Roper posted that last evening at the 61st Annual Mountain Amateur Athletic Club, Western North Carolina's Sports Award banquet, the girls' track team, if I'm not mistaken, were awarded, has been awarded as the 2022 Outdoor Track Team of the Year by the Mills Manufacturing Company in Olympic Sport. A lot of recognition. And one of the things that I learned, Ian and Keith, when I was early in my career is to be very careful mentioning individual names, okay? Because I always forget someone, and that got me in a world of trouble about thirty-five years ago, all right? But I am gonna mention two names. One is Matthew Gray. Matthew has been recognized as the Tara and Frank Burdette Medal Athlete of the Year in Olympic Sport. That's outstanding recognition. And Ms. Roper, standing right, right there, has been awarded the Mountain Amateur Athletic Club Scholarship, and she will continue her track career and her education at UNCA, if I'm not mistaken. I'm gonna steal an idea from one of our commissioners. Kevin Segal called me at one time and he said, would you please have some students come and lead us in the pledge? And I, it made everybody smile. And so this evening, we're gonna stand, and these students are going to lead us in the You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Mr. Roper and, and Keith, do you have anything that you want to add before we send everyone on their merry way?
Most of the success we have in high school starts down here at the middle school level. So the, the fact that, that, you know, these guys are doing what they're doing at the middle school level just puts on up to us, and it just makes us that much better. So it's the whole program that is just on fire right now, so I'm proud of everybody. That's part of it.
Excellent. Anything else, Ian? And thank you and all of the coaches for all that you do, for the time that you spend. We appreciate you so much. Could you help me honor them one more time? You all are free to stay for the whole meeting, or you're free to cut out of here. If I was you, I'd cut out.
That's a funny joke, Dave.
So she tells me, Dave, I don't bruise, and she drops a bar in her chin and cuts herself wide open. So she bleeds, but she doesn't bruise.
That's only part of what we have tonight. I told you, there are so many amazing things that are going on. And you can tell by your agenda with all of the events that are listed on the back pages. This is just the season for appreciation for students and staff, and we're gonna see both of those tonight. I would like Mr. Burl to come up now and to recognize our character award winners from all of our schools.
We missed last month, so we've got two months worth of makeup for March and April. That's what we're recognizing here tonight for character education. We'll start and go in reverse order of what we normally do, and start with Swain High School.
All right, I hope everybody's doing good. My name's Mike Verano, one of the new teachers at the high school this year, social studies teacher. I'm here to speak on behalf of Carl Baird, Baird, sorry, sorry, Carl. And when I, when the nominations were going around, I couldn't think of a more deserving student than, than Carl to receive this recognition. I have the privilege of teaching Carl this semester in my civics class. I'm lucky that honors or AP civics was not offered this semester because he would undoubtedly be in that class instead of mine. I wouldn't have had the chance to be blessed with him on my roster otherwise. Carl's an exemplary student to the true definition of the word. He currently holds a 100 average in my class. Carl's a leader in the classroom. He constantly takes lead in classroom discussions and offers a great viewpoint on a variety of topics. He's also a great listener during these times and always tries to learn from others' viewpoints as well. Carl not only shows excellence in the classroom, but also in just about, if not all, areas of the school. From his role as a student to participating in athletics, contributing to arts in the theater department, and most recently, running for student council, he is at the top of tier of each discipline. He is exactly what Swain High School looks for in a model student. You will see his name time and time again in the future if you have not already. I am beyond honored to speak on his behalf, and I know I speak for many when I say how proud I am of him.
Hi, I'm Nicole Hewitt, and I get to teach drama and chorus at the high school, and I get to talk about Emily. And I was not, I, I guess I'm gonna wing it a little more, I have a few words on my phone, so that's fun. Emily's amazing. She came to me, to my classroom, actually, Mr. Roper brought her to me at the end of the, right after the pandemic, so it was 2020, right? The fall of 2020. No one, we were not allowed to sing in our room yet, but she needed to audition for ensemble. And so since we had not sung, we sang one song at graduation, and here we are in like August. And so I let her go all the way to the back of the little theater and pull her mask down, and she sang Satisfied from Hamilton, which is hard. And I was like, yes! And I actually cried because it was so beautiful, because I was like, we're gonna get to do this again. And Emily has been by my side ever since. We held our breath till we got to do Clue, and then she was in Wonka, and then this thing, she's by my side. She helps me so much. She's one of the friendliest, kindest humans on the planet. Our group tends to have quite a few people, and she's always looking out for anyone that might be on the edge and giving good ideas and just kindness and helpful. And it's really fun when she won this award. Pretty much every teacher, when we were talking about it, she's that way all through school. It's not just an ensemble. And she is just so wonderful. She literally is the, the best and then some. And I'm so grateful that you, that Ian Roper brought you to my room, and that she's a senior, so I'm so excited for all that's to come. But we are so proud of you. You're an amazing person. And that's Emily, everybody. She's wonderful.
Hi there. I'm Debbie Clora. I teach social studies, 7th grade, Swain Middle School. And it is an honor tonight to share a little bit about a young lady that I had the privilege to teach last semester, that she frequents my classroom, maybe daily even, now that I don't have her. And she is just, I, I can't say enough about her. So I chose to put some things on here to read from. This evening, I have the privilege of recognizing a young lady who is currently a 7th grade student at Swain Middle School and a mere eighteen days away from being a rising 8th grader. A few words that our 7th grade team would like to share about this young lady is, she's very responsible, she is self-motivated, she's respectful, she is kind, she's helpful, she is honest, she is attentive, she is the most compassionate child ever, she's academically eager to achieve, and she's very, very strong in her faith. I probably have learned more from this child than she has me. She is a blessing in disguise. The kid that you would wish to clone, and I also wanted to share that she is the recipient of New Century Scholars. There's not a doubt in my mind, this is a future leader in Swain County. Stephanie Davis, it is an honor to award you the Character Award, and please continue to be strong and be true to you.
Toby, let's do it again. I think, I think the certificate was backwards.
I'll hear it.
It's all right. Take two. Thank you.
Hello again. I feel like I keep coming up here. So I would like to recognize a young man who not only have I had the pleasure to coach this year, but also to teach. And also, he was part of my National History Day club as well, which is totally voluntary. It's not something you have to do. It's for students who want to learn those research skills, learning how to write a paper. It was after school. And when we just, when we started talking as a 6th grade team, who we fed, who we saw as our character award, every single one of us said this name. And I think that's a testament in itself. Not only is he motivated in the classroom, but he's also motivated on the cross-country course, the soccer field, and of course, the track. He is a 6th grader who also competed in the state elite meet, and we only took three 6th graders out of the sixteen total kids that we took. He is willing to be coached. He always wants to see what he can do better. He sets a great example for his fellow students, and I'm very excited to see where his academic career will take him. And I am going to miss his very dry sense of humor, which is hilarious, and that is
I'm Trina Stiles, and I'm an EC teacher. And this kid here is Justin Brown, and he is top kid. He has the best manners. Please, thank you, excuse me. He's an old-school gentleman because he will hold the door open for us ladies. He is very respectful of his teachers. He encourages his classmates, and he will gently, gently remind them if they're doing something wrong. I think he's gonna be a leader, and I'm proud of him. He has come so far. I met him in the first grade. It took him three or four months to even speak to me, and the first thing he said to me was, what time do I go home? He has come so far. He questions everything, which is good, wonderful, and I'm so proud to present him to you. And he is, he, he deserves a character award. Thank you.
I'm Caitlin Glavine. I am Bruce's science teacher, here on behalf of Brandy Sutton, who is dealing with her annual fight with strep throat. So these are her words. I wanted to read them for you and be here for you because, you know, you're a pretty good kid, I guess. So she wanted to present a character award to an outstanding student who has truly earned it. Bruce is dedicated and hardworking and consistently demonstrates a positive attitude and a strong commitment to excellence. Bruce's hard work and determination have not gone unnoticed. He is always willing to lend a hand to his classmates, most of them, and he positively influences those around him. His positive attitude and perseverance are truly inspiring. Bruce, you should be proud of your example for others. You have shown that anything is possible with hard work, dedication, and a positive attitude. We are honored to have you as a member of our school community, and we look forward to watching you continue to excel in the future.
Hi, I'm Jen Thomas, and I teach 2nd grade at Swain East Elementary School. I'm actually reading this for Jessica Klein, who could not be here today, but Arabella's actually in my class also. So this is from Ms. Jess, which is how she knows her. When I think of a student with character, I think of Arabella. Earlier this year, Arabella came to me and wanted to do a fundraiser for St. Jude Research Hospital. I might cry. She had many ideas and was very excited about the possibility of raising money for children with cancer. With her help, Swain East raised over $500 for St. Jude. She is in my enrichment group, Ms. Jess's, and constantly keeps a positive attitude even when tasks are difficult. She is a kind friend and is always looking out for others. I'm impressed by her both academically and as a person. I know she'll continue to do great things. Congratulations, Arabella.
Do we have another from East? Do we have another from East tonight? You don't see?
I don't see the name that's up there.
Okay, so the teacher, I mean, the student is not here?
Hmm, yes, sir.
Okay, we will pick that up then in June, okay? All right.
Hi, I am Trisha Chapman, and this is my friend Izzy Allard. Izzy is in Ms. Tiffany, and Ms. Jen, and Ms. Liz's class this year, but she's actually my pick for character award because every morning when Izzy comes in the building, I should add, she comes flying in the building, she hugs and greets every person she goes by. It's hi, Mr. Ed, hi, Ms. Max, hi, Ms. Trisha, and she can make you feel like a million bucks even if you were not feeling very expensive just a minute ago. Just downstairs, she said hello to my daughter, she said hello to my daughter's friend, she said hello to Mr. McNahean. Everyone she meets, she makes you feel like you're something important, and that makes her very special. That is a leadership skill that not everybody has, not even grown-up people. So we love Izzy, just like Izzy loves us, don't we, girlfriend? Yeah. We are very proud of her. My other friend is Haley Raffone, and she was not able to be here tonight. She is Ms. Max's choice, so we will come back in June for her.
And so, as you can tell, it's warm in here, yes? And so if you want to stay and swelter, you're welcome to, all right? Otherwise, you're free to roam. Thank you all for coming tonight.
He went to the bathroom.
I think just the bathroom. He probably has. If he has to go to the bathroom that much, you don't want a road trip with him. Don't want a road trip with anybody, can't go more than four or five hours.
Air conditioning in this, in this building is tenuous at best. It's just the age. It's the same age I am, and there you go, that's it.
It happens. Things wear out.
Yep, they do. They do. So, Mr. White, thank you for allowing us to do things a little bit differently tonight. I really think that that 30 minutes was well worth the time that we spent. And at this point, I'd just love to turn it right back over to you, and as soon as we can get going again, okay?
Our heavenly Father, as we gather in this setting tonight, I pray that you would be with us, that you would lead God direct our hearts and minds, and Lord, that you would put the center focus on the families of this community, the students of our school, the leadership that our school holds, Lord, all the faculty and staff, every one of us, Lord, these that are on this board, I pray that your light would shine on us and our light would shine to a lost and dying world. Lord, we ask that you would continue to be with us, that we would do what is right in your eyes, and not worry about anything else, but just be concerned about you tonight. So, Lord, we thank you for loving us, we love you because you did first love us, and we ask all these things in your precious holy name.
Go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
There's an adjustment that we need to make. I think you heard that Brandy Sutton is out with strep. Well, three out of four in Dr. Sutton's house have the stomach virus, and that includes him. So he's not going to be here this evening. He tried. So we will strike the mental health report. It's nothing that needs to be approved. Okay. And he can present that to us in June. Okay. There may be some additions to the action items. That will depend upon the discussion that we have in just a little bit, okay? And so I will suggest to you at that time, if we need to amend the agenda at that point, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay. Other than that, I don't know of any other adjustments, unless you all do.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda tentatively as is?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? If I may brush your hands.
I have prepared for you a statement to explain something that we, we don't normally or very often talk about, and that would be an administrative regulation. In the fall of 2022, I spoke with our board attorney, or one of our board attorneys at Campbell Shatley, about the appropriateness of responding to statements as they become libelous or slanderous. I asked for guidance regarding when and if it is appropriate for our school system to respond to these types of statements. I have asked in my regional superintendent meetings if other school systems currently have a model for this that we might follow. Recently, Campbell Shatley has provided an administrative regulation to all of their school systems that can be used for these types of procedural responses. Tonight, I am sharing with you that administrative regulation. Now, an administrative regulation provides procedural guidance rather than setting the new board policy. Therefore, these are informational items that do not require board approval. In accordance with Board Policy 2470, I am letting you as our board know that we are going to add a recommended administrative regulation from our attorneys that's called Responding to Inaccurate Information, Harassment, and/or Personal Attacks Against Employees. I have provided this for you earlier, and there is also a copy for you tonight. This regulation will be designated in our policy manual as Administrative Regulation As the name states, the regulation provides guidance on potential responses to inappropriate communications directed at our employees, including communications that are made through social media. In addition to this regulation, I believe it is very important that parents and the public be knowledgeable about how the Swain County School System responds to reports of possible employee misconduct. Thus, the following are the typical steps we follow each time the school district receives a port of possible misconduct that contains enough information for an investigation to take place. First, the allegations are reviewed to determine which board policies and laws and/or laws may be applicable. Secondly, the administrative, the administration determines whether the school district can investigate or if the matter should be referred to law enforcement. At this stage, local law enforcement will advise us on whether we should investigate or do nothing until the matter can be investigated by them. Third, during an investigation, relevant students, employees, and others are interviewed, and documents are collected to determine the facts. Since both student and employee information is confidential by law, this information is not made public. Fourth, the board attorneys are consulted as needed regarding legal issues. And finally, a determination is made regarding whether the allegations can be proven. Often allegations are false and cannot be substantiated. If proven, appropriate action is taken. Again, the entire process from investigation of an employee through the final decision is confidential by law. Therefore, Swain County Schools normally does not and will not respond to allegations made in public forums such as social media. In short, all specific allegations are investigated and addressed even though the results are not made public. I need to add that this procedure only serves as guidance for the school system. Swain County School employees retain the same rights as do all public citizens. This includes the opportunity to respond personally, as allowed by law, when they individually believe it is needed. Now, do you have any questions about Administrative Regulation 7610-R? You have a copy of that. Are there any questions?
As that been checked with administrators.
It will be. Yes, sir, it will be. I wanted to bring it to you first. Any other questions? Then the second item on the superintendent report has to do with Leader in Me. You have a copy of the Leader in Me contract that we have established for the 2324 school year. Swain County Schools has been a Leader in Me system for a decade. We will be using the three primary areas as listed in the Leader in Me as guidance in our currently developing strategic plan. Board Policy 6420 allows me as superintendent to approve contracts for materials, equipment, supplies, or services up to $50,000. This contract is for $38,547. This is built around a cost of $11 per student as we partner with the Leader in Me through Franklin Covey. The contract also provides the required membership fees and one custom coaching day for almost all of our schools. We will work with Leader in Me to make sure that those schools that don't have personalized coaching days are served as well. We have been accustomed to paying more than $38,000 for this each year. In fact, we're saving about 40% this year by moving into a different type of association with them. You have the contract in front of you. It does not require approval because of that policy necessarily. Do you have any questions about that contract? Anyone? Or about the Leader in Me?
No questions about the contract, Mark. But how does Leader in Me, how does that program work, kind of, just generally?
It, RL, you caught me off guard. The Leader in Me is a social-emotional program that allows for us to help guide students in primarily two areas of decision-making. One has to do with personal choices, and the second part has to do with interpersonal decisions and interactions. The idea is for our staff to provide an overview and instruction for the students, and then to help guide them through that. There are also other elements through the year that include leadership, what are they called, Sonia? Leadership days, where, well, that's not what I was going at, but I will go with that, okay? Okay? Leadership days, where leadership is celebrated and highlighted. And I think that one of the pieces, RL, excuse me, Mr. Taylor, to highlight on this is that very often, our culture thinks of leadership as a select group of individuals who are helping to guide a group or an organization. The Leader in Me approaches it from the perspective that every person is a leader for themselves and for their future. And so we're looking at it from that perspective. There are also lighthouse teams that help lead the school through the process, and those are student-driven. Now, I want to be very, very honest. I try to be transparent with you all. COVID pandemic did not help us in strengthening the Leader in Me in the schools, and we are seeing right now that we need to reinvest our energy. And so we are going to look at doing that this summer and in the next year, and that's one of the reasons that I think that it's important for it to be part of our strategic plan. Now, that was, I said a whole lot. It's not complicated, but at the same time, it is. And it's built on the Seven Habits of Effective People that Stephen Covey wrote a long time ago. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Is it, is it basically like a curriculum? And is there any way of tracking it? Like, do you track kind of how kids progress along with it?
There are, there are multiple forms of assessment for this. There is a curriculum that is associated with it that can be used, so the answer to that is yes, and that is part of the package that we're paying for. It's an online curriculum now. We need to reinvest ourselves in that in some ways. Would you ask the second half of your question for me?
I guess, is there any way to?
Yes.
Do we assess or track how they? And I'm assuming this is probably part of like, is this what, when, and some of those, is this where it's incorporated?
I know at the middle school that what we see as when at the high school, at the middle school, it is designed around leadership. They call that their leadership period, okay? And I need to add that the middle school is one of very few, 10 or 12, lighthouse schools for the Leader in Me in North Carolina, which is a level above most, most schools. And we will be pursuing that probably in others as well. Is it tracked? It's tracked in two ways. There is something called an MRA. Don't ask me what that stands for today because I can't remember, okay? And it is a survey that is given to students, staff, and parents, and that allows us to track and see how, how Leader in Me may be affecting the behaviors that we're looking for. We also are able to track it through discipline and perhaps through other, I can't think of the word, annotative? No, that's not the word I want. Qualitative, qualitative assessments and interactions, okay? I think, Lisa, that, and this is a little bit nebulous, and I know that, I know that, but I think that one of the elements that shows us that Leader in Me has been working in the past and in some ways still is working is the behavior of our students and their interactions with others. Now, again, the pandemic has thrown a bit of a wrench into that, but we're working towards that, okay? So the answer in short to your question is yes, but you heard the long answer.
That's okay. And then the coaching subscription, do you mind to elaborate on that? The custom implementation, is that a, is that a teacher?
No, that is someone who is associated with the Leader in Me program, and they come in and they spend, right now, with our budget, I believe that we are only able to afford a day, but they come in and they spend a day with the, the lighthouse teams, the leadership team at the schools, and talk about where the school is, what their observations are, and how to move forward. We have been able to afford two days in the past.
For each school?
For each school, but those are extremely expensive, and we're trying to be judicious with our funding right now, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sonia, did I answer those well? Is there anything that you want to add? Sonia has been in the leadership portion of Leader in Me for several years, since it started. Is there anything you want to add?
I guess there's this question about the data to track. I think there's multiple things that you can look at. Now, I think he is, now, everyone's talking about the COVID pandemic, you know, we had to readjust some things, but we are now getting back into it, and you ask about when. It is a portion of that, but it's not what when was designed for. When was designed to do the PLT process and getting kids academic help. But not only is it needs academic help, so we have to fill that with other things. So this is their opportunity to have student voice and student choice inside of our schools, so they organize clubs, they organize, that's their time, so if they have a particular interest, to bring that to the table during that time. And then we use our leadership days. We have a coach that comes in, and she's specific to high school. She's different than the one at the middle school and the elementary school use because she was a secondary preschool. And so she comes in and basically you get to brainstorm with her about what you see, where you want to go, and what you want to see next. And so she really helped us, once we said this is what we're going to do with when, how to use that more appropriately. The high school actually now teaches, you ask about the curriculum, the high school teaches a, a high school curriculum, there's four different courses, I guess is the way, the best way to say it, and we teach three in one, and then the kids can actually test in that curriculum, and if they pass it, they can get two hours for each course of humanities credit in college if they pass that test. And so we currently have one teacher who is, is teaching that course, and it is a service learning opportunity for the students as well.
The pass rate for that, that test is extremely high, isn't it?
Ninety-eight percent last year that we had passing it, so, and we're scheduled to state the next one, the next week.
So not, not every student goes through it? It's, it's like elective?
It's elective. At the high school, it's elective, yes. Yes. Any other questions about Leader in Me? You know, we've been celebrating tonight all the amazing things that are happening, and I'm glad that Sonia spoke to Leader in Me because I want to share some ACT data with you. Now, I have to tell you that, that the numbers that I may use in this are very much preliminary, and they're not approved, and that's how come you don't see this in your board pack. Before I give you actual numbers, I would like to have a little more confirmation, but this is what we're seeing. We are seeing our three-year trend for the ACT data in math, reading, English, and science, largely either stay steady or improve. And, and that's a significant statement for us because there was a day when we were very concerned about our ACT numbers. Sonia and her team have worked hard to, to improve these. I think one of the pieces that I am so excited about what's happening at the, at the high school with ACT is that we are within, excuse me, not we, they are within two-tenths of the ACT state average right now, and that's been a long, hard battle. And so I want to congratulate them on their work for that. I want to congratulate Sonia on her leadership in that. I really believe that the reason that we're seeing these numbers is because of what she mentioned, and that's the PLT process. I've mentioned it as PLCs, and it's where our, our teachers at the high school take student data, and, and they just really tear it apart and look at how they can help individual students, and they have significantly, as a team, bought into this, and they're seeing significant results from it. I also want to tell you that preliminary data right now is, says that our reading ACT scores are above state average, and that our English ACT scores are equal to the state average. And we are seeing more students now who are passing with UNC standard expectations. All four of the, the tests in ACT, because they're tested in math, reading, English, and science. So I really just wanted to take an opportunity to, to tell you that academically, we're doing some amazing things, our staff is doing amazing things, and to shout out our high school for a minute. And thank you, Sonia, and to your staff for your leadership in that. That's very encouraging to me, okay? I need for you all to consider this evening shifting a day on the calendar. It will not affect student attendance in any way. Our last student day is a half-day, and that's on June the 2nd. However, the following Monday, which if I'm not mistaken is June the 5th, has been listed on our calendar as an annual leave day since the beginning of the year, and the reason for that is we expected snow, and it didn't come. And so I have been asked by several staff members if we could move that annual leave date to Friday, June the 9th. That would mean that all of our 10-month employees would not need to attend on June the 9th because it is a regularly mandated annual leave day. Instead, we would come on that Monday, all right? Now, that will affect some, some staff at the high school because June the 9th is a prep day for graduation on June the 10th, but Sonia has assured me that she will work with those, those staff members so that they will be able to experience that annual leave date in a different way, okay? So I would ask in a little while if you'd allow me to make that calendar adjustment. Have any questions about that? Okay? Now, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. McKinney, we have some faculty recognitions from the board tonight, and this came from your suggestion. And so, Mr. White, if you would point out who you would like to recognize faculty tonight, we can go from there.
Okay, and I believe everyone had a faculty member from each one of the schools.
Yes, yes, and what we're going to do is we're going to rotate through the year on that so that our board can be in contact with or be engaged in each of our schools in a little bit more of an intensive way, all right? And as board members, you have the opportunity to either speak with administration, or if you had someone or a group that you already had in mind. And so some may have something from, directly from an administrator, some may just know something that they want to shout out, okay?
We'll start with Mr. McKinney, and then we'll just go this way and end up like you.
You sure you want to say?
Absolutely.
I didn't speak to anyone yet because I had a couple of things that I observed, and that's one of the things, I want us to get back as soon as we can to visit. and that's one of the things, I, I want us to get back as soon as we can to visiting schools because I think it helps us see what's going on. And I am continually amazed at what we accomplished for a small school system in western North Carolina with limited resources compared to other systems, and how well we do. So, I'll get to the point. The first is, we, we got two people resigning tonight, Joanna McManahan and Nicole Hewitt. You don't replace people like that. Joanna McManahan is, I couldn't count the number of ways she's affected kids in school, not just her kids who get in class, but all over that school she assists kids. And Miss Hewitt, same way. The way they affect kids is hard, you don't get that in college. That comes from the heart, and we're going to miss those two, that's for sure. And the other is, I just want to point out some of the, the, the spring sports in particular. And I'm doing this, a couple of coach teams, or several teams, not from, I know we all like to win, and for goodness sakes, I've been involved in schools for, it seems like a hundred years, and it's all about, you know, what's the winning record now? But I look at it from a different perspective. Winning is important, how they affect our children. And I'll give you an example. I'm gonna start with softball. Mr. Toby Burrell over there, I hate his hair because you already lifted this. I take popsicles to these teams, and so I do see some things, I see how they react. At softball, sometimes I get time, I just sit there and watch them practice because it takes them forever to get through while the popsicles melt, but anyway, they have a tremendous effect on how these kids live and, and their expectations. And, and Toby is a good example of that. He is so level key that those kids respect him. You can tell the love between him and, and the team and, and vice versa. And it's just, it's just, it's fun to watch, and you know how those kids are going to learn something beyond throwing a softball. And so I congratulate him for that. And his assistant coaches the same way. They are, that's what you want with any of your kids. Coach Verona with baseball, same thing. He's new, but I've seen just a few things for how he interacts with students, how his players, and they respond. And he does it in a way that honors them and respects them, and he gets it done. And they both, they, they practice forever. They, I mean, they put in a lot of practice, and, and they've done well. Soccer, I don't need to say that, and Scott Klein and, and, and his crew, if you've ever been around Scott, you know how he affects kids. And, and, and he's good with their kids. And you saw this up here tonight. The amount of time that I and Roper, and Ian Roper rather, and Keith Payne, and he, all of his coaches, and there's several of them on there, deal with those kids is unbelievable. And look what they've done. And they, those kids think the world of the coaches and the coaches of them. So it's that personal relationship that I'm trying to emphasize. Same thing with the middle school that you saw here. I call them, you call them the Cook Twins. And I'm not got to see them because I'm doing this other, and I'm watching, well, I gotta go watch softball tomorrow. But I know them, and I know how they affect kids. I have seen them around their kids. And just observing how they deal with kids, we have the best dealing with our students. And I am so proud of what they do and so appreciative of what they do. And if you all give me the permission over the next year and a half, I'm gonna get around to a lot of people because I don't think we say thank you enough. And we've got such a good crew of people doing good things. I hope I don't miss anybody, and all of us during the coming of the year, because we talk about it and we know about it, but I want them to hear from us how we appreciate them. Thank you.
All right. I reached out to Ms. Tricia Chapman at the pre-K, and so here, I'm gonna just read what she wrote when we, I called her and I said, hey, we want to recognize a person or persons at the pre-K, and so send me who, you know, you'd love to do a shout out to. So, she writes, as a participant in the N C pre-K program, our teaching assistants are required to have or work towards associate degrees in early childhood education or a related field. On top of the hard work they do in the classroom every day to support the needs of our preschoolers and the teachers they work with, the following teaching assistants also took classes this spring to meet the additional requirements placed on early childhood educators. And those fine people are Elise Lossy, Bridget Nations, Elizabeth Green, Natalie Crisp, and Brittany Ledford. She said, we are willing, or we are grateful for their willingness to go above and beyond to make sure our tiniest students get the very best educational experience. And I have seen firsthand, I went for the Igloo Day, and then I was invited to go read a book one day as well, and went to each classroom and got to sit with the kids and read the book, and you do have fabulous teacher assistants, and you can tell that the kids adore them as well. And just that connection that preschoolers really need, I feel like these wonderful assistants are really giving that to them. You can just feel the care and the love they have for them, so fabulous. And Tricia, you're doing a great job too.
Thank you. It's my turn. So, I had reached out to East Elementary and reached out to the principal there, Ms. Sutton, and indicated that we were going to do a shout out. And the shout out that she said that she would love to give is to Angie Schuler, who's the administrative assistant. She indicated that she's the one that keeps the school running. She has a great relationship with the students, they all love her, she has a great rapport with the family and the community, and she's created a welcome environment for the school. Our staff would all say that she's the absolute best, and I think that that is a very true statement. A lot of, a lot of times, the assistants, teachers assistants, administrative assistants in the inner workings, they're so critical behind the scenes that a lot of times they're not seen, but especially when it comes with the assistance at the school systems, those are sometimes the very first face that you see when you walk in. And just as I believe it was Ms. Izzy got their award, those individuals can make or break whoever, whatever day you're going to be having. And so they're very important to the school system, as the face of the school system as you walk in, and so the shout out for these to Elementary goes to Ms. Angie Schuler.
Okay, yeah, shout out for the middle school. I talked to Principal Kerr, and it's good timing because I just got on a eighth grade field trip.
Yes.
And I said, can you tell me someone? He said, I can't tell you one. But he, he gave me a team that worked together on this, and I know these field trips, it was May third through fifth, which is, you know, a three-day field trip, but there's so much work goes into planning these things, and you gotta find lodging, you gotta find a place to eat, and, you know, there's this lot and places to visit, so there's a lot, it's almost like a year-long planning process. But the ones that he, and then the chaperones, if you chaperone one of these, he said it's a sixteen-hour day, but it's really a twenty-four-hour day. You get very little sleep a lot of times, but, but I appreciate them, they had a good trip, he said, and, and, and the names he gave me were Amber Gilliam, Janet Schuler, Auburn Barker, Debbie Taylor, Ramona Parsons, B J Ledford, Lizzy Carver, and Ashley Hyatt. And it's all a shout out to them, and thank them for all their extra work they put in, and Principal Kerr, for all the extra work they put into this to make that successful, and I know they had a great time. We appreciate them.
Thank you.
Well, I had West Elementary, and when this name come across, it's a very familiar name, and I don't want to make her feel any older than she might already feel, but she used to kid-sit me, so she started off in the right direction, having, having to be stern and having, having to have a lot of guidance, because I wasn't your model child growing up. But Mrs. Penlon, Mrs. Shawna Penlon at West Elementary, it was astonishing to hear that she's just got twenty-three years of service in. That's just something you don't hear a lot these days in education. I know when I, I was looking back when I went, went to school, there's a handful, she be back there, Coach Burrell here, Tommy, Mr. Sale, they were in the school system when I was in the school system, but beyond that, most of mine made a career out of it, made a third-year career out of it. So, I want to give her a shout out for that, first off, the twenty-three years of service. But Mrs. Sutton, Mrs. Sutton of West Elementary, wanted to point out that she took the T L C role halfway through the year, which is a learning coach. And then the teacher that took her position, took a position back at his home county where he was from, Coach Creach, so then she felt led to step back in that position so that her students that she originally had wouldn't be enduring a third teacher for that year. So she's doing her T L C duties in the afternoon and her teaching duties of the morning. So it may not sound too difficult to us ordinary folks that aren't in the education world every day, but that's quite the undertaking. And she, of course, I know Shawna, she's making lowly, you never know she's in the room, she's real quiet and docile, and, but her, her energy level and her passion and her personality are things that we can all learn from, even if we're not elementary students. And I get, I get, I'm a frequent flyer out there at West Elementary, my daughter's in fourth grade, so I'm out there at least one morning a week, and by every evening, a parent pick up. And Shawna's one of those people that you always want to run into, you always want to talk to, ask how the day was, because she's always got a positive take on it, whether you were having a bad day, whether she was having a bad day, she's going to tell you it was a good day. And our students need that, and we need more of those teachers who are going to dedicate twenty-three years of service to our kids and do it in a passionate way as Ms. Penlon does. So I'd like to shout out to Shawna Penlon at West Elementary.
Thanks to each, each of you for that, and we'll rotate, and we'll have another round of those in June. I think it's time what's spent, okay? Mr. Dr. Sutton, not Mr. Sutton, but Dr. Sutton, sent a text while we were talking a few minutes ago about Leader in Me, and he wanted to add that the Leader in Me is listed as a core instructional practice for social emotional learning in the mental health plan that has been designed. So we're building around that already. He also wanted for us to know that it is CASL-approved. CASL is a social emotional group across the United States that's very well respected, and that Leader in Me has been found, when implemented effectively, to reduce discipline behavior. And I think that we have seen that in places as well. So thank you, Dr. Sutton, as you're in the sick bed for, for helping us out with that. Now, the last thing on the superintendent report is you have in front of you a contract from a company named L S three P. That contract is for the H VAC work that has been identified as needing to be done at the middle school. The contract you're looking at was developed by John Henning for Campbell Shatley Law Firm. If you will recall, when we met with the commissioners, we said that as a school system, we were going to take care of the middle school H VAC need using S R three money, okay? And if you will also recall, Emily Kite provided for us some cost projections for that, which we gave to the commissioners at that time. We released, per your approval, we released a request for qualifications on April the fourteenth. We received only one response, the deadline for those was May the first, and that company is L S three P, as listed on, on this, this contract. You have a copy of what they gave to us, and if you don't have a printed copy of this and you would like one, I'd be pleased to get you one. They also are in the, the Google Doc for you. They also have returned one of these for the high school H VAC and electrical work as well. We'll deal with that at another time. That's a much more involved and intensive process that we need to think about. The contract that you have before you works off of the, the exact cost projection that Ms. Kite provided. The projection for the H VAC replacement and improvements comes in at one million six hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred forty dollars. That is listed in the contract exactly to those, to those numbers on page eighteen, okay? Their service fee for their basic services is seven percent. I called Kevin King and said, is that a reasonable rate? He said, anything you can get below eight percent is good, all right? The seven percent for this company comes out to a total of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That is a flat fee. There will be no more funding for their services unless we have to have additional work by them somehow, and that is a, a secondary conversation with them, okay? We would have to approve that, all right? We will be working with them for a full timeline. We don't have that yet. However, on page, I believe twenty-two, there is an established date for receiving, receiving, not sending out, but receiving construction bids, and that established date is September the thirtieth. I think that's a great point for us because we're up against a little bit of, of a time limit on getting this taken care of, with, this has to be in place next summer, okay? I called, Emily Kite works for this company. I called her and said, are these numbers accurate, and is that a good date? And she said, that's absolutely fine. I said, what about the contract? She said, it's just like the other contracts that we've gotten from John Henning for other work, they're absolutely good with it, okay? Now, I believe you have three options tonight. The first option is to approve the contract as it's in front of you, but give me the authority to negotiate and finalize the final pieces that include the timeline and those elements that are at the back of the contract that have not been completed yet, okay? The other, the second option you have is to delay until that's completed and then approve at a later date. Now, let me caution you, if you choose that, and you absolutely have the option for that, but if you choose that, that's going to push back when we can release construction bids, okay? And then the, the, the third option that I see is, is if you want me to call John Henning and have him come over and go over all of this with you for the fine pieces of the contract, I'll be happy to do that. I would entertain your questions about that since we are in the discussion format. My recommendation to you is, is to approve the contract, let us move forward, and give me the authority to finalize it and then have Cody sign it after all the pieces are finalized, okay?
So clarify again, what, what the missing pieces that we wouldn't know is the timeline?
At the end of the, there, there's a timeline that we're missing, and Stephanie, what other pieces are missing at, at the backside of this contract?
It's basically the pieces that L S three P has to add to it, their hourly rates in case there are word being, services requested, and their certificates of insurance, they do a basic audit of it, and then they outline the schedule. So, but this would be presented to them, they would complete, put in their pieces, and then it would come back to be signed.
Did that make sense to you?
I think so. So if we, if we would approve tonight, then when they, when they give us those missing pieces, then do we approve on those as well, or is it a blanket tonight for going forward?
I, I, you have, I think you, I think you can do it either way.
Okay.
Okay, if, if you give me the authority to approve those myself, then you could approve the whole contract, okay? And I know that there's a trust factor involved in that. The other is, we could have them fill those pieces out and then bring it back to you for final approval, okay? I, I believe that those are the two. Mitch, I, Mr. Carson interrupted you, and I apologize.
No, I'm sorry.
Did I, did I say something inaccurate?
No, I just said, I just, I figured it'd have to come back for approval for his signature one, for Cody's.
Yeah, e- either way, you can approve the contract, and Cody could have the final say with his signature, okay?
Okay, I see.
Where do these S R funds come from?
Federal, federal dollars, that was part of the, the pandemic COVID relief funds.
There is, we need to move on this.
Yeah.
There is a movement to take those funds back. Now, what happens if we approve this? Two months from now, they take all those funds back, I mean.
Then we, we will be, I don't have an answer for that. Stephanie, do you have an answer for that?
I don't know, I'm waiting, so not mentioning about getting the funds back, now they will revert unspent funds at the deadline of, we're supposed to have these funds encumbered and if they're eliminated, I'm not heard about, returning funds prior to the deadlines.
I would imagine once the funds are encumbered, I think, I would imagine once the funds are encumbered, it's going to be really hard for anybody to take those back because that'll open up a door to tremendous lawsuits all over the country. because that'll open up a door to tremendous lawsuits all over the country.
I think the quicker we.
Yeah, once we.
Move.
I agree.
To encumber them, then that would be hard. If they're there towards the fall into the year, most certainly, they're going to start probably taking some of those things back.
I cannot remember the numbers. This, does it all fall, I mean, do we have enough to cover?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We have about 1.7 million.
Okay.
And then we have some additional fund balance that we can call, we can draw on from Article 46. That'll cover the remainder.
So this would help us use all that?
Yes.
Good deal.
And Mark, this contract been looked over by our lawyers or?
It's, it's written by the lawyers.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, the money seems to be right in line with what we're looking at.
I believe that it is and, and I have faith in the company that they'll work with us. However, if as a group you want to, to wait and approve the whole thing, I can get with them in the morning and we can get that taken care of quickly. But I would suggest if you want to approve the entire contract with all of the exhibits completed that are at the, at the end of this, that we call a special meeting to do that within a, a few number of days so that we can get it done. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Just to, just to clarify, this is only the contract for our.
Yes.
So they don't only need to link the scope of our building, it's on the project and it's in action. So it will not hold us, you know, to any kind of construction.
No. No. That would require the construction bids to come in.
Right. But the sooner we get there, the more sure we.
So it, this is kind of like a project manager type stuff?
Right.
We don't, they would operate as project manager for us. They would oversee the contractors.
For seven percent?
Yes. Any other questions? Mr. White, what would, what would the, the pleasure of the board be on this? Do, do we want to approve or do we want to get the exhibits completed first? It's up to you all.
And it, it would, it would be my position, if, I know I don't speak for everyone, but it would be my position. Looking at this, a lot of the architects, insurance certificates, proposed timeline, all of that stuff is a lot of administrative stuff that goes along with the contract drafting and not anything that necessarily affects it other than the hourly rates. However, I don't think that that's anything to hold up the contract position right now. But to go ahead and go forward with it, we'll get those things, allow yourself to, to vet those things along with Ms. Treadway and then have a look at it at the end and sign it. Get the, go ahead and try to get those funds encumbered as quick as possible.
So with, with what you're saying, are you, are you suggesting that the board approve the contract and then you have final sign off?
Yes, it's, yes. And given all the authority, go ahead and get that done as quick as possible.
And I would, I would wonder if that would be approved, I mean, meet the approval of the rest of the board? Okay, then, is that okay, Jerry? Then what we'll need, excuse me, Mr. McKenney?
Jerry.
Okay. I tried to show respect where respect is due. Okay? And so, Mr. White, what we'll, what we'll do then is we approve the agenda with the possibility of change. And that would need to be added to the action items.
Okay.
Okay? Would that require approval by the board? Or can we just assume that it's okay based upon the original?
I think with, with the tentative approval, knowing with the motion that was made that there may be some changes to the action items, we can go ahead and do that.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. So we'll just add that to the action items. All right. Ms. Treadway has some budget and finance updates. And if you'll excuse me, I need to visit the little boys' room.
Good evening.
Evening.
I have put in your packets the budget to actual as of April 30th. And at this point in time, we have spent $22,335,327. And our overall budget is at 31 million. So we've used roughly 75% of our budget. And at this point in time, we should be roughly at 83%. So we're right on target. There are two areas that are over budget, but those will be taken care of by an amendment tonight. One was on a federal program that has been approved by our federal consultant. So they, they approve it first and it comes to the board. So that'll be corrected. Then also another area that's over because of a purchase order that's going to be reclassed. So. For the budget amendments, for state public school fund, we had an adjustment on PRC 014, which is CTE. The state takes, as part of our subscription to Adobe Services, they, they pay for that and then they take part of our allotment. So that was $575 reduction. We received $11,875 for tribal gaming allotment. That's for textbooks. It goes into our textbook allotment. And for PRC 32, which is children with disabilities, we received $37,447 base allotment. That is a pass through to Cherokee Central Schools pre-K program. We act as a fiscal agent to pass through some federal and state funds to their pre-K program. And that's part of that. The rest of it was just reallocation by purpose codes. The state's changed a lot of the, after the summer school, they no longer want it to go into a purpose code 5350. So you'll see a lot of changes going from 5350 to the regular curricular PR, purpose codes. So. For federal, we had some amendments to budget for some sales tax refunds. So anytime we receive sales tax refunds back, then we have to put those, give those funds back to the federal programs for which those are for. So I had to do some amendments for those. Then we have for PRC 109, where I was telling you, we had the overage of about $6,000. We submitted that amendment. So that's for that. And then in PRC 110, we received our third and final installment. That's for 21st Century for our after-school program of 128,000. And the rest, once again, is the reallocation by purpose codes, moving our summer school programs to the correct purpose codes for curricular instruction. Capital outlay, I budgeted the $50,000 that we had requested from the county for Article 46 for the Fine Arts Center improvements. And then as a special revenue fund, we received an additional $2,800 from the Parents' Teachers Program. And that was an additional amendment. And then reallocation by purpose codes for the remainder. And that is all. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the final element of discussion this evening, Michelle Heron, who is our Director of Food Nutrition, needs to tell you about two or three items. And I'll tell you that on our approvals for employment, there were two late additions that had to do with summer feeding employees. All of the employees that Michelle brought to us this afternoon are currently employed by the school system already. This is just for additional employment this summer. We can talk about that then. Okay? Michelle?
First of all, I'd like to talk to you about the summer feeding program. I will be starting training on June 5th and the summer feeding will start June 7th and go through August 4th. I will be closed on July 4th and 5th. We will be operating out of two locations this year. That being the high school and East Elementary. The high school will be feeding the rec park, our STEM camp programs, high school, middle school credit recovery programs, our CTE camps, our congregation for children, the Head Start program, Lots of Talks, Little Hands, Grace Christian Academy and the kindergarten academy out at West. They will also be doing the middle school. We will prepare food at the high school and transport it to the middle school and serve the lunch there four days a week. It's just a lot to operate each location, so that will help out. And it'll just be the lunch that we'll be feeding out of there. I'd rather do it there for the walk-ins because anywhere else they have to get buzzed in and they have to go all the way through a school to actually find the cafeteria to actually eat. Hopefully that will increase our open participation with that. East Elementary will be feeding the Cherokee Youth Center, Paint Town Gym, which is actually going to Birdtown this year, the 5K Summer Camp Program and the Kindergarten Academy. I expect you vote to have this program this year so we can continue feeding our students all summer long.
So Michelle, from what I understand you just saying is that you are, we need approval, you need approval from the board in order to put the summer feeding program in place?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I ran some numbers. I've been crunching numbers for the past two and a half days. But we should be feeding approximately 1,600 lunches this summer. Excuse me, 16,000 lunches this summer. And approximately right around 10,000 breakfasts. That's quite a bit to be feeding.
Okay. So that's part of the, the summer feeding program you were just speaking about?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll ask the board, do you have any questions about the summer feeding program that Michelle is speaking of right now?
About approximately, how many people does that keep employed?
I am asking for eight. And I've got one that will be part-time and three substitutes.
You have any other questions for Michelle about that?
Is the summer feeding program, is that, when, when you look at the budget on, in the beginning of the year, is that part of the budget for the cafeteria, is the summer feeding program?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else?
In effect, it's already budgeted in.
In effect, the summer feeding program is budgeted in? Yes?
Yes, we get, we get separate funding for that. The summer feeding program has a separate funding source that comes through. If you do a summer feeding program, then they reimburse the group money.
Did that, did that answer your question? Okay.
And just to let you know, it is free for anyone 18 and under. So these students are not paying that.
And there's no application or anything like that for it? They can just?
Yep, they just walk in and eat.
And do we deliver any?
So we deliver to the Cherokee camps.
Okay.
C Y C and it's usually Paint Town, but they're transferring to Birdtown this year. And I will have an audit this summer.
But we, we, we are not delivering to community stops or anything like that as we have in the past, like particularly during the pandemic?
Yes.
Okay.
But they can go to these locations like Birdtown and, and Youth Center and stuff?
So all of those locations will be closed just for the enrollment there. But I will have the middle school open that they can come to and eat.
Oh, okay. So the only people that are enrolled in potentially summer programs with Birdtown and Cherokee Youth Center and stuff, those can eat except the walk-in is at the middle school?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So like at the high school and East, we've had those open, but there's just not a lot of participation at those locations. So I decided to close those and just have the middle school open. And the middle school, I'm only going to open for June right now. And if it's a big hit, I'll continue through July.
And that's lunch only?
That will be lunch only.
Okay.
It would, it'll be a big hit if it's, it'll be a big financial hit if it doesn't go well. So I don't want to commit after July either.
So what I'm hearing, I want to make sure that I'm clear on this. And I think we've talked about this, is that you will attempt this piece at the beginning of July. And if we find that the, that there's not a good response, particularly enough of a response to pay for the help that's required, then there will be a need to discontinue that for the rest of the summer. Just that part.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have, have we done anything in the way of PR or advertising or notifications?
I have started flyers and stuff.
Okay.
That will go out.
We need, we need to get that on social media and face, and, and all of those pieces and get it in the newspaper or anywhere else we can. Sky Riders and the Sky, whatever.
The radio.
A video would be a really good idea.
The radio, yeah.
It's a really good idea. Okay? I'll be happy to work with you on that.
The radio has something called the Community Calendar. You can ask about that, but I know if it, if it falls under Community Calendar, then it's free.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yep.
So it's open to any of our students at Swine or Cherokee?
Any one under 18 can walk in and eat. They do not have to belong just to us.
Any other questions? Michelle, talk to us about what's next.
So the next thing on my agenda is about our bid process. Swine County is part of a co-op that includes Cherokee County, Clay County, Graham County, Macon and Jackson. And it includes Cherokee Central Schools. And with that, we go in together and try to get some more buy, buying power for our food. So we have been working with U S Foods for the past couple of years and they won our bid. And when they win our bid, we don't have to send it out for bid for the next four years if they agree to renew it. And that ensures that we're getting food that's coming here. So I would like to recommend that we stick with U S Foods, that we're able to renew that bid.
And so, again, Michelle, this is for my clarity only. Okay? And we have not spoken about this. The, we are in the second year of a four-year agreement. We need to, in order to participate in this as a second year, we need approval to do that. Correct? But I also heard you say that U S Foods has the option to opt out of providing this?
After the four years.
After the four years. So they are locked into a four-year agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And so you would be asking our board tonight to approve that we renew with them for the second of the four-year term?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any, any questions about that?
Is there a percentage of that, that they increase each year on food?
Last year, we had all kinds of increases. Most of them from force majeures.
What does that mean?
Because of the pandemic, they're able to change their price.
Okay.
As long as the North Carolina Alliance approves it, they can change their prices.
Okay.
And then we have to pay that.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a maximum that they can increase?
Not that I know of. And I've not seen their prices come back yet.
What do you mean by come back?
So I, in March, we have to get together and tell them how much we're going to use. And then they'll come back and let us know.
Okay, so we're waiting on that return? Okay. But in the original contract, that was approved, I believe, by, by our board as a four-year term. That force majeure was already in that contract. That's part of the agreement?
I'm pretty sure, yes, sir.
I would assume that it would be. Okay.
So if we approve or agree to approve the contract for year two, we are already certain, we know what that's, what that's going to cost?
No, sir. They have right to, depending on their supply.
When will we know about that?
It should be coming back anytime now.
I'd like to see what that's going to be.
Yeah, can we wait on that? Just, or, or is that going to put us in a bind?
No, we can wait on it.
Just, just briefly until we get those numbers. Because if it's astronomical, then it may be, you know, a better process to look at something else. But if it's relatively the same and, and.
If we don't go with them, it's going to be a humongous process to send it out for bid. And then we may not even get somebody to bid the food for us.
That was going to be my next question to Michelle. Because we're in the second year of a four-year agreement. And because there, the, the competition for this.
And they don't like coming out here anyway.
There probably is already a figured adjustment in it, right? Year to year?
There might be. I did, I have not seen the original. That was done under Jennifer.
Usually on a renewal. Usually on a renewal, you will have a up in price, it's a percentage of each item, you know, obviously, but.
Well, food's been very crazy since the pandemic. A lot of it doubled in price.
If, if we, if, if the board chooses to wait until they know what that increased number is, or that, that, if it's built into the contract, okay? And with, also with the knowledge that it would be very difficult to find another company. And we might be putting ourselves in a real dilemma.
And then I'd have to break out of our alliance, our co-op, and I would not have the buying power to go out on my own.
Has the other schools in the co-op already went with US Foods this year?
So, we can, we can wait?
Yeah.
And, and, and I can get the contract, for Michelle, I haven't looked at the contract.
And I can send you the bid.
Okay.
Is that pretty easy to get, I mean?
Because you said they should have it in at any time?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a big Excel spreadsheet.
Would you be able from that to calculate what, what kind of an increase we're looking at, what'd they tell you?
Um, now, I'll have to go back to last year's and compare, because they don't, they just give me the product, what we said that we would purchase from them, and when I say we, it's the co-op's usage, not just mine. And then they tell me per case.
Okay.
Now, you're already getting the purchasing benefit from the co-op, right? So, if you don't go with the co-op, then you're gonna go for an automatic increase, because you go with a separate wholesale. And you're most certainly not gonna go to Engels about it.
Right.
So, you probably don't have any choice.
And there was a school that was out on the coast that's out there by itself, they didn't have anybody bid to them. So, therefore, I don't know what they're doing about food. And that would be an awful predicament to be in.
But the other schools haven't, haven't agreed with it yet either, or you're still talking with the co-op?
Yeah, um, it is a regular thing that they do. This is my understanding that this happens pretty much ever since Jennifer was here, um, that they were in this co-op, and they just renewed it. We did have another vendor that wanted to quote our food, and the co-op agreed not to let them, because if we put it back out to bid and for some reason they don't bid it, US Food doesn't have to bid it to us again. And then everybody in the western counties would be without food and scream with, so.
So, so as a board, how would you like for us to move forward with this? I, I think in some ways that Michelle and food nutritionist is between a rock and a hard place on this.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of going ahead and letting her do that, with the stipulation that if it's just mind-boggling and some kind of a dynamite increase, then we come back and discuss it. But I don't think we want to get into negotiating with these companies or sales, because we don't want to do it. So, I, I don't think we've got any choice in letting her do that work. And, and then she informed us with the understanding that if it comes back, just blows her mind how big it is, then because all the other schools are gonna be in the same boat. And we're in a better situation by this compact evidently than we would be on our own.
I think we'd have to stay with the co-op, I just don't know if our co-op, you know, if they know the prices yet, if, if the rest of them are going with it, or, you know? I wonder if we could talk to them and say, or?
They're gonna go with it.
The other school systems?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but we can reach out. And, and if you want to delay on this, that's fine, again, I'll, I'll go to the same, to the same statement I, I had about the, uh, the agreement with LS three P, and that is sooner is better than later, okay? So, I think Mr. White, as a board, you need to decide if you want to move forward, or if you want to move forward and, and allow Michelle and I to get back with you with more information. You know, with, when I say move forward, move forward with an approval, uh, or how you want to, how you want to move on that.
Okay, well, it seems like worst-case scenario is worst-case scenario. I mean, you know, either way, so if we decided later, if it was astronomical, and it's like, we can't do this, this is crazy, you know, this is a monopolization of the food market for the schools, uh, and we decide that we're gonna go another way, then, uh, we can do that. I mean, like I said, what are they gonna do, just pull the contract and not bid it anymore? So, um, I think if we went ahead and, and authorized that tonight, then it's, then it's, it's at least moving in a direction for us to be able to work. So, I do understand that, I know it's kind of, it sounds, it's kind of got the world of McBarrel when it comes to food for schools right now, so. And I, I, that barrel's not something we need to put our faculty or staff and our students in either, so. Uh, I think we can go ahead and move forward with it with the understanding that if it's too much of a difference or something outlandish, then we can revisit it.
Okay, and, and I would be pleased to reach out to other school systems, or have Michelle reach out to other school systems and see if they've approved this. I would imagine that they have.
We approve it, the co-op approves it at one time.
Okay, so, from you saying that, my understanding is if this board approves, then that goes into the collective, and the whole collective will approve also?
And I can sign off on it, yes.
Okay, so that would give us that, that assurance, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, that's fine.
All right. And there was one other piece, and it's, it's the, uh, the opportunity, two other pieces?
Um, I've still got dairy on there and my chemicals.
Okay, go ahead and talk about dairy and chemicals.
So, dairy is my milk that I have to get, and it's basically the same way. It's a renewal, the third year on that. I think they might have went up two cents a carton, is all they've went up.
We, we know that as, as an increase already?
Okay.
Is that through US Foods also? Is that through US Foods?
No, our milk is through pet dairy.
Okay, so that will be a separate approval, you would have foods and then dairy?
Yes, there's, all three bids are listed on here.
Okay, so when we approve, we'll approve all the bids at one time?
We can, or as a board, you can choose, you can choose to break them apart and approve for them in, approve them individually.
Well, I think if we're all gonna do it for the purposes of keeping it uniform, we'll do it all at once. And just say, we'll accept all bids for the, for the cafeteria, yeah. If we're going to, you might as well do it that way.
Okay.
Okay.
And chemicals are the same way, and we use correctional enterprises, North Carolina Correctional Enterprises, they are, um, it is the prison division doing our chemicals.
And all three of them do the co-op, with the co-op?
My dairy and my chemicals are not with the co-op.
Those are individual?
They've already been, Jennifer bid those out, and that's who won.
Does the co-op do any, I know we're not in it, but does the other counties co-op for the dairy and chemicals?
Um, not that I know of. So, our co-op is just the food.
That'd be worth talking about though, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
I mean, if you get a better price.
And I think it depends on who will deliver to you too.
Yeah. Geographically, where you at?
But I mean, if you go in, if, uh, Jackson and Graham and all does pet, you might go approach them as a group and say, hey, we got all this, and get, might get a better price.
Let's, Michelle, and I'm not trying to make your workload more difficult, but let's look at that, and let's talk to other, uh, directors.
Okay.
And see who they're using.
And in the meantime, we can go ahead and, and approve what we've got for this year, uh, and get that done, and this could be something that we could talk about going forward.
That's what I was gonna say, I think I'd suggest that if we were to look at anything, we'd start looking for next, next year, because it's just, yeah.
It probably need to be when the bids are up.
Right, but you can start looking probably at options, and even, you know, if there are even any options, because you don't wanna, we don't have a plan B, you know, so.
I understand that.
So, when we come to action items, all three of those would still be wrapped together for approval?
Yeah, yes, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, all right. Okay. Those are your bids, now talk about C E P.
C E P, okay, what is C E P? It's the community eligibility that allows high-need schools to offer breakfast and lunch to all students at no cost. I've been crunching numbers for two and a half days now, trying to figure out what's gonna be the best way for us to go. I would like to recommend that we allow Swine High, Swine Middle School, East Elementary, West Elementary, all to go C E P. It will be difficult on my end, because I've got to increase participation. Um, for breakfast, will be eight percent from what we're doing this year.
So, we would need to increase eight percent in order to break even on this?
Break even.
Okay.
And my lunch needs to increase by fifteen percent.
Over all schools?
Over all schools. It will be very difficult for the elementary schools, because they're already getting free. So, most of the kids that will eat for free are already getting free. For the high school and the middle school, we have room to increase on our percentages. So, I'm jumping around with that.
West schools are already getting C E P?
West is getting C E P. When I started, when I took this job, West was already on C E P, and I did not understand the program. And they were at a very low rate of reimbursement. And I say that, um, so, let me give you a little information about the C E P. So, my pros to this would be, of course, all students eat breakfast and lunch free. There's no free and reduced meal applications. And y'all may say, what's the big deal? That's like two weeks out of my time, at least, approving all of those. C E P takes our direct certified students and allows them to get the free meals. That's the way this program works. It is based on a four-year cycle, so when we lock in this year, we will have these numbers for four years. If we choose to change those numbers, if we choose to update in two years, we can do that. If we choose to drop the program, we're allowed to do that too. With all that being said, who qualifies for this? So, this year, our numbers are up because of our direct certified students. They, um, have included Medicaid-free students. So, at East Elementary, um, we came in at sixty-four percent. West is sixty-one percent, the middle school is fifty-three percent, and the high school's at forty-two percent. So, everybody has qualified this year, you have to be at forty percent, and they are trying to change it to twenty-five percent. But we are qualified. The only drawback is when the high school qualifies at forty-two percent, only sixty-seven percent of our meals are reimbursed at a free rate. The other thirty-six percent is paid at a paid rate, which is only seventy-nine cents per lunch, is all that I get reimbursed for. And you're asking, well, why do you want to take it that way? Well, I do think that we will increase our participation, which will make our numbers go up. And another way to get them to get free is if I bundle all these schools together, we can get it at eighty-six percent.
What, what do you mean by that? If you bundle, we can get it at eighty-six percent, what's that mean?
It will be an average, so where East Elementary, their percentage of free reimbursement will be a hundred and two. West will be ninety-seven percent, um, middle school will be eighty-six percent, and the high school would only be at sixty-seven percent. That I get reimbursed at a free rate.
But if you bundle all of these?
If I bundle them, it'll be eighty-six percent across the board, and then the high school can be included.
Okay, so the fourteen percent that's left would be reimbursed at seventy-nine cents per lunch? Okay. Which means that we have to make up the funding for that from somewhere, correct?
Yes, so, if, and I know in your packets, I gave you all of those spreadsheets that you saw. I was able to manipulate the numbers, and if we increase the overall percentage by eight percent for breakfast and fifteen percent at lunch, we can break even on those. And I went back and done some numbers, and you're thinking, well, how are you gonna increase all those meals? So, when I researched the meals that were free in twenty-one, twenty-two, and versus twenty-two, twenty-three, we served nineteen thousand eight hundred and three lunches, more in twenty-one, twenty-two than we did this year in twenty-two, twenty-three.
In twenty-one, twenty-two, everyone?
Everyone was free.
Everyone was free, so it was basically C E P?
It was, it was COVID.
Right.
So, it wasn't really about C E P, so everybody got reimbursed at a regular rate. But, um, we served nineteen thousand eight hundred more lunches. And I took the data from September one to April thirtieth of both years to get those numbers. For breakfast, we served an extra twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine meals. So, with that being said, that percentage is seven point eight two percent for breakfast and six point six seven percent for lunch.
Increases?
It really decreases, we decrease. So, if we go back to it, I'm hoping that that will help with our increase.
If, if we were, if we hit those numbers that we had COVID, would that, would that make us, uh,
That will be a big portion of it. That will be, excuse me?
Would that make us break even, or would we still have to increase more?
I will still have to fight to get more participation. But that will be a good start. We did cut out the early dismissals in February and March and April, there was four days. With those four days, I lost approximately two hundred meals a day. So, that will help, I mean, there's just little things like that that will add up for us doing. That right there is nine hundred dollars a day that we have changed by just cutting out those half-days. With this eight percent and fifteen percent, um, breakfast, I need sixteen extra meals at breakfast a day per school. That's not that many.
Did I just hear you say you did sixteen extra meals per day at each school?
For breakfast.
For breakfast. And you'll break even?
And lunch, I need forty-eight meals per day per school.
Now, this wouldn't include West, right, because they're already getting?
Yes.
So, your numbers might not go up there.
Okay, so, the elementary's probably won't go up that much, they may go up. I know that Desiree has said that she has talked to Amanda Sutton, and they're willing to help me in any way they can. And if that means having everybody come through the cafeteria for breakfast to help increase those numbers, we can do it.
But I think that Lisa's, Lisa's point, and, and we've talked about this, Lisa's point is well-taken, and that is, we're already seeing
Everybody's free.
A fairly good response, so to increase the number of, increase the participation number, that's gonna be more difficult.
Yes, it is.
So, what we're really looking at, Michelle, is increasing the middle school and the high school participation rate a significant amount.
So, and I pulled those first participation rates, um, for March of twenty twenty-three, that was kind of my basis for all my numbers. So, for breakfast, thirty-eight percent of the students are eating breakfast at East. So, I think there's room there.
Okay.
Um, West is only at forty-five percent eating breakfast. Middle school is thirty-four percent, and the high school is at fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. For lunch, um, East is at eighty-one percent, West is at seventy-five percent, so you're really not gonna have a whole lot increased there. Middle is at sixty-seven percent, the high school is at thirty-seven percent. So, that's, my target's the high school, is to try to get them to eat more.
And we'll go back to my initial question, okay? If we don't meet our, our targets, how are we gonna pay for the lunches? Because the students wouldn't be paying, would they?
They would not be paying.
So, it's got, that funds, that funding's gotta come from somewhere, from where will that come?
If it does not work, we can back out of CEP at any time.
Okay. In other words, we are really not sure where that funding would come from? Okay.
Working hard to get the numbers up.
At what point does that teeter? At what point will we know we're going to meet them, we're not going to meet them, and can pull out? Or is it something that's like, okay, we're already there, we know we're there, can we keep going? Or is there a point?
So maybe we can check, like, at the end of September and maybe end of December to see how it's going.
But, but if you pull out of that, then you've got to go back and send out those, uh, applications in, in mid-stray. I think that's going to be hard to do.
It will be very hard to do.
Because, you know, if you've got a family who used to get in front of that now in September, you say, we can't do this anymore. I think that's pretty, going to be pretty difficult.
It was very hard to do it in August.
Yeah, I heard you, and, and you're talking about those applications. I assume that we're talking about free and reduced, right? Free, be free and reduced, have anything to do with anything else that we need, including reimbursement from the tribe? Because the tribe, in my, my understanding, has been paying for all enrolled members based upon whether or not they receive free and reduced. And if they receive free and reduced, then that's already taken care of, correct? Okay.
I got a couple of questions. What's the current reimbursement rate before the number drops off?
Like, per meal?
I guess it's per student, per meal, yeah. Breakfast or lunch is probably different.
Lunch is four. I think it's four forty-three. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Because that's the current reimbursement wa, rate for CEP for lunch, correct? That's what you're asking?
Uh, yes. And then I was, I was going to ask too about the other, if it's not CEP.
Four fifty.
Okay. So it, it's pretty similar between the two. The difference is it drops off if we're not meeting numbers for the percentage that we need to capture.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Because the paid lunches would be at seventy-five cents.
Right.
And, and our lunches are actually costing like four fifty? Is that, did I, did I understand that right?
Yes, that's what we'd be reimbursed.
That's what we, that's what we get back, I guess, regardless of what we spend. That's what they'll reimburse.
Get reimbursed seventy-nine cents, right?
Um, for, so you've got your free and reduced meals, and then you've got your paid meals. So your free and reduced would be at the four fifty, and then your, um, paid meals would be at the seventy-five cents.
Can you, can you send, ever send home any, like, bagged lunches? I know, like, during COVID, we did that, where that counts. Is there anything like that on Fridays? They leave with something that counts as a, a meal?
No.
Okay.
Uh, we do have the after-school program.
Okay, does that factor in?
Um, not to CEP.
Not to CEP? Okay.
It's a totally separate program. But it's not sending them home, sending the meals home with the students. They would eat it just after school.
And this doesn't cover, this, uh, bright of interest is separate?
No, they would be included.
They're included in this too? Okay, they're in the middle school numbers. And no, like, daycares or anything like that, like we do the summer programs, can fall into this? Would it be worth? Would it, a couple of thoughts. Would it be worth changing your breakfast times to where you're waiting almost until after the bell rings, so that every, you're capturing more kids? I only ask that because my son is the last one to get dropped off at West, and he tells me every morning that I'm late, and I'm really not. I'm right before the bell, but I'm wondering if?
No, he should be able to go to the cafeteria
He can still get it.
till about nine, nine fifteen and pick up breakfast.
Okay.
His way to class.
This, is that the same with all, with middle and high school too?
They should be, yes.
Okay. Because I just thought maybe if they're something they can?
I don't think that middle and high school do it near as much as elementary schools.
Like, make it more like, you know, I hate to say it in your face, but you know what I mean? Say, like, making it more available, then they may be more apt to, to take it.
So at the high school, when there is proper staff, they will take it out to the front, so the kids don't have to come all the way to the cafeteria and try to sell some stuff out there.
Yeah. And if it's free, I mean, if the kid doesn't have to have any, you know, change on hand or anything like that?
It's easier to take it
It is easier.
to different locations in the schools.
Yeah. So I wonder if we could think outside the box on that and trying to, and the same with lunches?
So are we, Sonya, availability?
I have somebody that sits out there every morning in the front door where the kids pass every day. They pass it on typically with fast food in their hands.
But for the high school, I mean, I, I kind of got lost a little bit there. So for the high school, if we approve what you're asking for, who at the high school would be able to eat free or reduced breakfast?
Every student.
If the CEP passes, everybody?
Well, that sounds like that's also something, I mean, I understand that they, I, I was guilty of it too, of being able to do that, but if I knew, well, I don't have to pay six dollars for McDonald's breakfast, I can walk through the door, grab breakfast on my way to school.
And if the parents know too, they're going to give them cash. I mean, maybe.
Eat non-stop.
And money is limited, but I wonder if, you know, you could do some sort of questioning surveys to high school kids, because they can be, I don't want to say more picky, but more specific, like, is there something that they would be more apt to eat for breakfast and/or lunch?
Regular biscuits, if it's not whole grain.
And you can't serve a non-whole grain?
We do, we do. Um, but I've got to stay within my guidelines.
Right.
We have switched it up, and we have been offering a lot more at breakfast, even though, you know, maybe only ten kids will eat cereal, and ten will have a pop tart. We will do, um, the feels very cream cheese bites. We will have a biscuit too.
Yeah, I know, I know. The guidelines are tough. I mean, I know that from where I worked too, so I understand.
I'll be with the, our kids, and we have, we open our doors at seven o'clock. We send kids that want to eat breakfast that are in the gym at seven o'clock, we send them up at seven fifteen to eat breakfast. And when our bus kids get off the bus at seven thirty, our early birds are home, and our bus kids are coming in to eat. Our kindergarten classroom teachers have said that their kids eat better in the classroom, so all of our kindergarten kids are eating in their classrooms, so all of those are counting, kindergarten to sixty-one this year. All of those kids are getting a breakfast. I think one of the things, you know, is it is later rifles. And our cafeteria staff is very good at giving a bag. Sometimes if it's just cereal and a milk, they put it on a tray, but that's something most of our kids can manage. I can bring the sausage biscuits. I know that's been an issue that you, you can't help. Gravy and biscuits, our kids will turn the doors down, get in there, eat gravy biscuits and sausage biscuits. I think it's sometimes, um, you know, parents like to trick the kids, you know, and forget that. So it's often, we have a lot of kids that come in with McDonald's and Bojangles. So, you know, if parents get them
Yeah, it's hard on my wallet.
It's a, oh, I'm going to call y'all.
It's hard on my wallet.
But, you know, I think some of it is what's offered. So we have to start class and they will, instructional time, I, I just don't have it. And I talked to the cafeteria staff. I said, do you want me running for them to send these through here from seven thirty a day? And they said, no. And I, and they were all sitting there.
They didn't ask me. I said, yes.
I asked your people. And they did not. So I don't know the best balance of, we're willing to do what we can. You know, if it's sixteen and breakfast, that would be the increase. I can recruit sixteen kids to go up and get breakfast. It would be nice to know the numbers of how long we're going, but I think a lot of it, again, I think it's choice of, of what we're offering.
Sonya, do you think that it's possible to, to see that level of increase at the, at the high school? Did I just put you in a corner? I'm sorry.
Well, I certainly am not going to speak approved of five hundred and sixty students. I think that's something that needs to be asked. So five hundred and sixty students, why are you not, what do you want? What will, what will help you increase? Because that level of student will give you almost a guy.
Yeah.
I promise.
Absolutely.
They will, they will tell you what it is, and they are going to tell you.
Yeah.
We failed. They're not going to, they only think the birds would just, they're sure they're going to bring them on. Just to be honest.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, I can tell you, because I've heard that, for my year-end students. But, uh, if, if you want real information and valid information, then I'm asking the students.
What's our deadline on this? When do we have to decide to participate or not?
I think by the end of the month.
This month? So we could, uh, survey students in the next week for information to see if the increase is possible, correct?
We could.
We do not have to do CEP at every school?
We do not. We can choose to do it at the middle and the two elementaries, if you would like. I know that the parents are going to be upset. If you're going to do it at three of them, why not do it at the fourth?
And I think that's, I think that's part of the dilemma in this.
I mean, for me, I'm optimistic on the CEP. I think that it could go over really well. I think that it might just take a little bit of, like, out of the box, like, how are we going to make this happen? What can we ask the kids? If the kids at the high school, if you get an overwhelming response that they love biscuits and gravy, I mean, there's probably nothing wrong with doing that twice a week, is there? I mean, there's nothing that says, I don't know what all the guidelines are, but, um, if they, you know, and see what they just don't like, and if they are saying nobody is going to eat this, then, you know, let's try, because you're right, I mean, they'll tell you. I mean, I, I get, I get a text almost every day from one, you know, saying, can you bring me something? And my wallet can't handle it. So, you know. I, but I think that maybe if we just ask them, and we just come up with different ways. I mean, I have no idea of the guidelines, but, you know, maybe, can you put a kiosk somewhere else for those kids that are rushing from Ag? And I, I don't know. But I think that, I really think that it's possible. I'm optimistic.
Michelle, I know you have guidelines on nutrition. Can you do gravy and biscuits?
Every day? No. I do gravy and biscuits, probably every other week, um, at least Thursday or Friday. And I'll do a sausage biscuit. I try to alternate those. I have to stay about eighty percent on my whole grains. And the kids are not going to eat a whole grain biscuit. It's just a waste of money.
So that's a federal guideline that you have to follow?
Follow my whole grains, my saturated fat, no trans fat, my calories, and I've got to have it for your vegetable.
I think we're, we're, we're a little stuck. I think the board may be a little stuck on the fact that this might be a cost problem. Might be a funding issue. Um, and unless we can, I don't, are you prepared to ma, are you prepared to make a decision on this tonight as board?
If, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I, I think that I, I would, I can't imagine, it's, it's hard for me because in a, in a, in a reality, I couldn't imagine that any, eh, I don't want that far, but if I was to go all the way, but if I'm that far out of, if I had free food, I would be eating at every opportunity I had, whether it was a brown biscuit or not. I'm going to eat it, because I was burning three thousand without calories a day. Um, but.
With you saying that, I've had a lot of my cafeteria workers say they won't come and eat because they have a balance. They won't come and eat because they have to pay for it.
And that's, that's where I, you know, that's where a lot of students were at. You know, I was limited because I couldn't, you know, spend that much. But then again, I mean, so I would hope that that would be a, an intriguing factor if they knew about it. I know that as a parent, if I had a, a child there, if it's going to be Bojangles or the free lunch, you're going to go eat some free food, whether, I don't care what color it is.
That's what I'm going to choose for.
Yeah, that's, it's a choice there.
At least go.
Especially if it doesn't cost anything.
Eat up his fruit and drink up milk or?
Just something.
Something. You've got something.
And it didn't cost you a dime. But I understand also, you know, dealing with teenage students, I mean, it's, it's hard.
Is there data, because this, it used to be free when we were in COVID and out of COVID. Is there data from the high school specifically that will indicate that when it was free, that students ate? And, and that's just something, I made a point to look at.
I did pull all of it from last year to this year, but I didn't write it down for this presentation.
Yeah, that's a pair of data when you've got X percent of students were eating when it was free versus now that we're charging again, the students do have.
And that's what you were saying, is that, because a total data was nineteen thousand, and what were those numbers?
Nineteen thousand eight hundred lunches and twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine breakfasts.
But that still didn't meet the quota that we would need to meet?
That would, that wouldn't get us to the percent.
No, not exactly. But it would be over halfway there, right at it.
But it wouldn't meet it.
Right at halfway. That's, that's correct.
So we would still be left with a funding issue? I'm going to make a suggestion. It's just a suggestion, and that is that, uh, that Michelle and I and some others sit down and look at this, um, from some different angles and come back to you. And I know that Michelle said that we have to have a decision by the end of the month on this. And it may require for us to get together for, uh, another conversation. It would be a short conversation.
Oh, I think that that's concerning, what we're doing with funding, a significant amount of it.
Yes.
And, and so if it's something that we believe we could do based on surveys or whatever, whatever we need to do, uh, then most certainly we're all for it. I mean, I'm all for all the students getting free and reduced lunches. If we can do that, that'd be fantastic. But we can't be left holding the bucket either.
And, and I appreciate you saying it that way also, because I, I'm afraid that the community may be concerned that we would be turning down the opportunity for free meals, but it's not all free. You know, and, and the way that things are happening right now, there is, there is some funding that is coming back in to help cover expense. With this, there would be no funding coming back in to help with the extra expense. I believe that that's a concern at this point. Am, am I speaking accurately, clearly?
It's, I'm willing to let her move with it, with condition that she said that if she sees it's not going to work, you change it.
But at that point, if it's not going to work, do we have the funding available to be able to cover what's fixing to happen?
Now, you said, I think you said that wouldn't, that funding would be covered for a while, right? The extra funding is going to come a little later in the fall.
No. So I would be reimbursed at a percentage rate. Um, the other funding, I guess, would be coming out of our pocket, child nutrition.
And it would be, and that's going to happen either way to a percentage.
To a percentage.
But if we pull out of the CEP, then it's?
So, but if we up our participation, we won't have to have the extra funding coming out.
We were only ha-
So it's not either way.
Our numbers were only halfway during COVID, so we got, we'd, we'd have to double what we did during COVID to make that. Right? If I'm understanding it correctly. So I, I agree with Mark. I'd, I'd like to see more data on it.
But wait, Co, which part of COVID? Because there was a part where they staggered, and kids only went?
No, this, they were all in last year.
Okay, la, last vis, uh, last school year.
So, so this was during, everyone was still free last school year, and those are the numbers that you're using?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. White, I think that you need to give us an opportunity to sit down and to look at numbers and to see if there's a possibility for us to find a funding source that could cover this if it didn't work.
Yeah, we need, I think we need to have that fail-safe, just, just a just-in-case thing. And I, I can't speak for everybody, I don't have a problem, that we need to have a, a quick meeting sometime towards the end of the year to be able to go ahead and lock this in once we've got the numbers. I'm all for it.
It would have to be this month, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we will- It would have to be this month and, uh, we'll, we'll, we will set a deadline and as I'm talking with the board this evening, we'll set a time whenever they'll get back together to decide this matter, just this matter, okay?
Yeah.
That'll give us an opportunity to do what Sonya has suggested and also to talk to our other administrators and put a plan together that might work, because this is gonna take a community effort if it's gonna work, okay? All right, that, sound like a good solution, okay? All right, so, uh, tonight, the CEP is basically tabled, um, and then we would be voting on the other two pieces, or you would be voting on the other two pieces, not me.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
I believe that those are all of the discussion items, sir. Do you, as a board, feel the need to go into closed session to talk about any personnel? Are we ready to move into action?
I think we can go into the action.
Okay. Um, may I please recommend to the Swain County Board of Education that you approve the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Tredway?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
Uh, I would like to recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the new Trafara contract. If you'll recall, we've had a conversation about this and we were not able to get it at the original price. The, uh, the new cost for the Chromebooks is about twenty thousand dollars a year more. Um, I think that we need to move forward on that. Do you want to add anything to that, Ms., Ms. Tredway?
It's a plus, it's a little bit of a last increase, it wasn't a change in the original process, we, we had to go different amounts.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense to you all? Okay, so, I recommend that we approve the new Trafara contract.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the summer feeding program as presented by, uh, Ms. Heron.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the child nutrition bids as presented by Ms. Heron, and that was for, uh, food, milk, and also chemicals.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
Good, okay. Uh, we're, we're going to leave the CEP until later, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Um, I, m, may I please, um, add two items at this point? Um, I would recommend that you approve the LS three P contract, w, giving me the opportunity to get those pieces filled in at the end and at that point, Mr. White would give the final approval.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
Okay. Um, may I also add a request that you approve a calendar shift moving the annual leave day from June fifth to June ninth?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
That moves us to personnel. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Jared Turbefield as teacher at Swain Middle School.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Coral Litzau as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands. Joe.
She's resigned, I do have some questions, uh, but, but, yeah, I mean, she's resigning, you can't do anything about that.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Thomas Dixon as custodian at Swain East Elementary effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Jessica Watkins as school nurse at Swain East Elementary effective July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Matthew Hewitt as teacher at Swain High School effective June second, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Amber Griffin as a substitute bus driver effective April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Kevin Jones as a substitute bus driver effective April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Carrie Kirkland as STEM camp teacher.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Deanna Booth for the CTE summer program.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Neil Hawken as a gear up after school teacher effective May third, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Pat Smiley as summer program bus driver.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education approve the following for four-year contracts. Jody Marr, Kristy Anthony, Casslin McManahan, June Black, Lisa Sutton, Michael Dehart, Megan Lucas, Ryan McManahan, Timothy Sale, Jane Dean, Ray Michael Gunter, Sean McCarthy, Barbara Sneed, Brian Thomas, and Ashley Michelle West.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve one-year contracts for the following employees. Sarah Elizabeth Boston, Arvis Bowman, Hannah Clemmer, Sherry White Demus, Carolyn Easterly, Kenesha Garrison, Carrie Kirkland, Whitney Davis MacLeod, uh, Tamara or Tamara, how do we say this? Messier, thank you. Reba Jordan Raines, Juliana Vosman Soto, Katie Brand Walls, Whitney Baldwin, Abby Brown, Taylor Rose Smith, Megan Whiteside, Carly Wilcox, Auburn Barker, Elena Booth, Elizabeth Carver, Carver, excuse me, Deborah Clure, Jonathan Cook, Joshua Griffin, Griffith, Elizabeth Gray Lakey, Jessica McCray, Ramona Parsons, Deborah Taylor, Tiffany Walker, Angela Bab, Lydia Moose, Austin Cook, Kenneth Haney, Jay Rackster, Eric Stevenson, Cameron. Thank you. Michael Verano, Ashley Walker, and Matthew Thaden.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
It is unfortunate that I recommend that Swain County Board of Education accept the retirement resignation of Joanna McManahan as teacher at Swain County High School effective August first, twenty twenty-three.
With regrets, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands.
So, I have to vote for it?
Motion passes.
As I've said in the past, Mr. McKinney, I have yet to find a way to deny someone retirement and get him to come back to work. Okay? She is a loss for a lot of people. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Nicole Hewitt as teacher at Swain High School effective June nine, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Canan Sellers as custodian at Swain East Elementary pending his background check.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ John Heisel as custodian at Swain Middle School pending background check.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Regina Parks as EC teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary effective May fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
We need to do the next ones quickly. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Ashley West as head varsity cheerleading coach.
I'll make that motion with joy.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
Thank you, Ashley. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Ashley Walker, different person, as assistant varsity cheerleading coach.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
Thank you, Ashley. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ the following for the summer feeding program. These are employees, they already work for us. Sherry Clure, Esther Fortner, Katie Gunter, Anna Stiles, Kathy Price, Janice Hatcher, Stephanie Seekanen, and William McQuade. Did I say that right? See Akena. What she said.
Got a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ the following as substitutes for the summer feeding program. April Crawford, April Dykes, and Joyce Hurley.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education approve the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three open and closed session minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, motion passes.
Thank you for that levity.
Andrew Bynum.
Appreciate that. There are all kinds of things that you can participate in, you see that, um, please take note of the banquet's. Graduation is on June tenth at ten AM. Um, at this point, we have a policy committee meeting with RL and, excuse me, with Mr. Taylor and Mr. Carson on May the fifteenth. I don't think that anything is gonna interfere with that. Uh, you say our June meeting is June the twelfth, we may have to schedule another meeting before then. Um, please put June twenty-eighth on your calendar. Uh, every year, we have to have a financial closeout meeting. We can meet early on that. I've got five PM stated. If you want to meet earlier, someone needs to make that decision, okay? Generally, that meeting doesn't take as long as the meeting you've sat through tonight.
You said that's what day's head on?
Is that a Wednesday?
Wednesday, Wednesday.
The Wednesday, and we, we said it early so that those of us who need to fulfill other obligations at church can get there. But we can, we can do it earlier too, if everybody can get there.
I'm available earlier, but I don't know everybody's schedule.
Is that a, a, a bad day, uh, Mr. White?
Shouldn't be.
Okay. Any one? Um, Jerry, every day's a good day for you. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five PM?
That's fine.
Okay. Those are, that's the, that's it, folks, uh, we have closed session, everybody else can go home. There will be no action items after closed session.
Do we have a motion written out here to go into closed session?
I move the Board of Education, go into closed session pursuant to General Statute Section one forty-three point three eighteen point eleven for the following purposes. Under section A one, to prevent disclosure of privilege or confidential student information pursuant to twenty, USC twelve thirty-two G, Verpa, and General Statute Section one fifteen C dash four oh two E under subsection A one, to prevent disclosure, privilege, or confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute Section one fifteen C dash three nineteen dash three twenty-one and under subsection S five, to discuss the acquisition of real property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, brush your hands, we're in closed session.
So, uh, Mr. Holt?